Good evening, everyone. It is 6:02, and I'd like to call the July 24, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education, Cape Girardeau School District, number 63, to order. Let the record show that all board members are here except Paul Carnes, Casey Cook, and Veronica Langston. We still have enough people here to have a quorum. So let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Board, you have before you an agenda.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion seconded and carried. So I don't think we have any information proposals or comments from the audience today. Nope. Okay, so moving on, we'll start with informational reports. And first up is Board President's Report. I don't really have anything formal. I just want to welcome Dr. Benyon as our new superintendent. We've been in office position for 24 days now, so we look forward to working with you in the coming years.
Well, thank you. I'm excited as well. She just made me even more nervous. Being my first board meeting, it went well upstairs, so. I just wanted to talk a little bit about school getting ready to start. We're really excited about the new school year. We've been working hard on our CSIP plan, our Continued School Improvement Plan. We've been kind of getting ready and planning for the school year. I just do want to first, for the first day of school, is just almost here within a month. I just want to say thank you to our maintenance staff. Mr. Crowell does an awesome job working with them and planning to make sure that our buildings are ready for the opening of the school year. And then our tech department. I've been over there a few times. Mr. Russell is over the tech department, and they've been working very hard in the buildings, replacing computers, replacing network systems, Wi-Fi systems, lots of different things. They're very busy this time of year. This is just a, these jobs are just very demanding, especially in the summertime, a short span of time, so that they get our buildings ready. I just wanted to recognize them and just show them some appreciation. They've done a great job this summer. Just a reminder, kindergarten academy is set for August 10th from 8:00 to 11:30 a.m. Families are able to sign up, sign their children up now. Our elementary schools have been promoting this with families. This is a day of fun activities for incoming kindergarten students, and it gives them a chance to learn their way around the building and meet new friends. Opening Day, which is our all-staff-welcome back event, is set for Wednesday, August 16th. We spent some time Friday with the CTA. We were building our set at that point. It will be a special time. The CTA has been working on actually developing the game that they're going to be playing, so we're really excited about that. I know it might seem like a long ways away, but this is important to note this. Graduation is moving to Sunday, May 19, 2024, and it's going to be at the Show Me Center. Decision was made based on feedback from families, central high school leadership team, and this collaboration with Central Office. Moving graduation indoors will allow for much easier planning for families. They don't have to worry about limited seating at a backup location like we had to this year, or a backup date if we were determined to keep the event outdoors. So we're looking forward to working with the Show Me Center and having a great graduation this year. And that's it.
Okay, next up is Program Evaluations, and we'll start with Professional Development. Mr. Russ?
Yes, so start off with most of my program evaluations for the year, first off. So first one up is Professional Development. You know, we have one of the best professional development groups committees that I've seen, and we offer so much for our staff. You know, we have our, we have our committee who works very hard throughout the year to make sure that it all gets pulled off. And so, so let's talk a little bit about the program. This year, we've switched over and started to put the new CSIP goals on there, so this connects back to CSIP Learn 4, which is a, you know, keep the, keep all of our resources and instructional practices up and up to par. And so, action step connected to that is develop a process that PD leaders use to state, to use state and local data to plan our process, our professional development, to stay focused and to keep us up to date. And so, as you guys can see, we still keep above that state requirement for 1% and have her since I've been in the district. And so, again, all of our PD goals, as you guys will see later on, are connected to this new CSIP. And then, all of our training comes from either we send people out or bring people in to be trainers, and so that way we've got people inside of the district that are experts on different subjects. We've got eight PD days a year, and this year is our first time we're going to, we're going to try a floating PD day, and so really excited about that. We've got a lot of training that we, you know, is either mandated through the state or that is training that we have to do every year, and so we've created videos for our staff across the district that they can, they can, they can watch that and do that kind of on their own time, so we give them that same window that we give them for that floating work day. And so, we're excited to see how that works out. You know, we still have our early release time as well, and then different buildings, they also have professional development built in through collaboration, and their collaboration times, just depends on how those buildings set those up. You know, this year, we always have a yearly meeting where we all come together and plan, and usually it's, it's more than that, but we all sit together and plan that way we can coordinate different PDs for different times, things like Alice Training and others. And so, we're also using Kickback. Last year was the first year, or can I kick back, kick up, which is our PD system. It has online professional development. It allows us to schedule everything and receive feedback on all of our PD. And so, buildings are able to get very specific feedback on sessions and their PD days, depending on how intricately they set those up. And so, they bring that feedback back to those meetings as well as, you know, the needs of the building to plan for next year. And so, some of the concerns moving forward is, you know, we try to add data so that we're, I guess, professional development around data so that we can make better decisions for our students and give our teachers the training that they need. And so, you know, we'll, we have a lot of PD around Galileo, especially at the high school, because that'll be their first time using it this year coming up. And so, that's one of the big focuses of our department, is making sure that they're, they're ready to go and feel ready for that. And then, we also are, I've started this year already, this last year, training around our English Language Learner students and being able to more broadly meet the needs of those students inside as a growing group within our district. And then, you know, Mr. Beck will speak here in a minute about the Aspiring Leadership Academy. It is just another tool that we're, we're trying to offer our staff to grow in different ways. And so, again, above average, because we offer things that other, other school districts can't and don't, and so really excited about that. Just, I love for our teachers to go out too and find professional development and go to professional development outside of the district too, and that's, Chris has started that years ago, and you guys did, along with our CSIP, and we've continued that. And so, they're always bringing in new ideas and sharing back with the staff. And so, I always love, you know, the summer, because they do that a lot during the summer, and they come back and they get to share those ideas with us and with their staffs. So, guys have any questions on professional development?
Okay, next report is Testing and Assessment.
All right, see if I can see that far to switch it over on the, haven't figured this part out yet with me being over on this side of the room. All right, um, let's see, I'm gonna scroll back up here in my notes. So District Assessment, really the only thing that has changed from this year to last year is, you know, with Galileo expansion. And because of that and be taking over some budgetary items, you'll notice right off the bat, the cost change on the cost of the program. I just wanted to start there because it takes some explanation to say, why did we go from $12,600 to $150,200? And the answer to that is, we really haven't, and it's just we've moved some things around in budget. And so, I just wanted to more accurately reflect for you guys kind of what we, where we're spending our money and how we're spending it. And so, Galileo, as a part of a three-year deal, we, I think it's somewhere around $95,000, I can't remember, Danny, we had that article, I think it was somewhere around $95,000 that we spent on Galileo.
Yeah.
But it's over three years, and so that's reflected here in this cost of the program for this specific year. So that used to be in a different budget, and so we moved it over to the testing budget because it's testing. And so, it's a big, huge part of the budget. Also ACT, we moved that out of another part of the budget into this budget. And so, a little shock value there right off the bat. But really no change in, in cost other than just, it looks, looks crazy, pretty much spending the same amount. And so, we have also aligned them back to our CSIP goals, so we've got Learn 2 and Learn 4 of our CSIP. And again, that talks about using that benchmark data to give us that, that view to drive our instruction and to make changes if we need to, and holding those data review meetings and which that'll, you know, we have it as a district goal, it'll seep into some other places as well. And then also, making sure that we've, we've got the information to be able to give teachers outside of just Galileo, but also our year-over-year for state testing and other pieces of data that'll help our, our teachers out. And so, another thing that is a big change for this year for assessment is the reading plans, and you'll, we'll hear more about that as we get into school. But the state changed the, the rules around reading plans, and so the assessment for that is a whole lot more broad than what it used to be. And so, our reading specialists are going to be taking time this year to test all of our K4 students, and so.
K5.
K5 teachers, yeah, or students. And so, that'll be another big change, and so we've added dibbles to our system, but we'll have to see, because the state's changed some roles here this summer, and so that'll also change throughout this year as well. Part of that too is using that data, and so TEPL is a part of that as well. And so, again, as far as, as concerns around that is getting test scores back. We're starting to get some preliminary scores out of the high school level. Those, I just found out about that on Friday, and so we're still pulling those and digging into those, but we still haven't gotten anything from K8. And so, we don't know when we'll get that yet. They haven't given us any, any information around that. And nothing official from the state's even come out about the high school scores. The company just happened to send that out. And so, again, around that, you know, added testing and change in testing schedules also causes some stress, and so we're, we're looking at, you know, getting used to the new norm, but also make, trying to make the process easier. And so, one of the things that our, our reading specialists have to spend a lot of time on is analyzing that data from all of those tests, so we're trying to make that process easier as well. And so, again, we're just trying to give everybody the right information, right, to make good decisions, so, as, as best as we can.
I want to emphasize something that you, that you kind of said, but I don't, just so that I'm saying this publicly, so that people that are paying attention or watching online hear this, but I think it's a tremendous strength of our district that we pay for ACT tests for all of our juniors at Cape schools. The state used to pay for it for everyone, they stopped doing it, and our district has continued doing that, and I think that's a fantastic thing, that we're providing that opportunity for our students. So I just wanted to clarify that, so people were aware.
It gives our students a leg up in a, in a process that's hard to get started.
Yeah, for sure.
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Okay, moving on, we have.
Dr. Fegman?
Yes.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Since we're getting ready to go into our, our reports and consent agenda, we're going to be appointing individuals to specific roles. I think with the number of people that watch online, maybe Mike, could we take a couple of minutes and have Dr. Benyon introduce everybody to his cabinet so that when they're, they're hearing people give reports or, you know, we're appointing people to different positions, that maybe they have a better understanding of who they are, because we know everybody here, but people watching online or in attendance may not know all the new faces. So, I mean, if that's not.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So we did a restructure, oops, we did, and I'll start with Mr. Payne. We did a restructuring when I started my new position, and one of the, one of the things that we did is we only went, we went down to one deputy superintendent, and that is Mr. Beck, and he's going to be over K-12 education and then also human resources. And right next to him is Mr. Crowell. He has many, many, many hats. He still continues to wear all of those hats, though that did not change for him. He is over facilities and maintenance. And then, Mr. Russell, I almost called him by his first name, Mr. Russell, he is going to be over academic services. He's Assistant Superintendent over Academic Services. He has two personnel underneath him. That one is over elementary, which is Tina Schusler, and then the other one is over 712, and that is Nick Cato. And the way we were able to do this at no cost to the district, we actually saved a little bit of money, is, is that we combined my role into Mr. Beck and, and stopped the role of what Mr. Russell's job was. He actually combined that into his previous role, which was over technology. And then, that was the same thing with Ms. Schusler, so it allowed us to hire a secondary curriculum person, which is Nick Cato. And over here to my left is Mandy Keys, Ms. Keys, she wears a lot of hats. I don't, I can't even list that many hats that you wear, but she is over, she's Assistant Superintendent over Special Education and many, many, many other things as well. Mr. Payne, I was going to start with you, but I didn't. He is our HR Director, but he is also our General Counsel. We combined our HR position and General Counsel. Together, we were spending several thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, so that's how we actually saved money, and we were luckily, lucky to get Mr. Payne as not only our HR Director, but he's also our General Counsel as well. That's the new change. And he is also going to be the Secretary, Board Secretary as well. Ms. Beth Poynner is going to be on staff for a while longer as the Board Secretary, but she's already given a deadline to Mr. Payne, and he better get it together before a certain date. I won't say that date, because hopefully that will happen, may not. So we're really excited about the new team. Oh, and I'm, man, the most important person, the money person, Lindsay Dudek. Raise your hand, Lindsay. And she's, she has, you want to talk about someone that has a lot of hats? Ms. Dudek has all the hats, so we're really excited about the new team, and, and we've been working hard in Cabinet and just planning for the next school year, and I can't wait to see the outcome. And where is Kristen? She usually sits up here. Kristen Talent, who is our Communications Director, and we're lucky to have her. She's getting used to me being her office mate, and hopefully that'll get better for her at some point. But I'm excited for the position and looking forward to the school year.
Thank you for introducing everybody. Now they can.
Spread it out a little.
Names and faces, yeah. Okay, next up is Academic Services Report.
Yeah, I'm excited to announce that going into the new school year, 2023-24 school year, we're going to have our very own Aspiring Leadership Academy in the district. This is kind of a common model nationally, not so common to Southeast Missouri, from what I understand. Me and Dr. Benyon and Dr. Glass, before his retirement, had talked about building this model out in the district for several months, leading into the summer months, to really start the planning, but this program is going to be designed for our current staff members that are committed to developing their leadership skills and preparation to possibly becoming an Assistant Principal or Principal of a building in the future. The program objective, I'm not going to read all of them, but the primary objective is increasing leadership capacity throughout the district by developing a cohort of school leaders that can successfully transition into those admin roles later. And then also, participants will engage in outside learning, just outside of the monthly meetings that we'll have in-house with our Cabinet Leadership Team. They're going to do an action research project that focuses on one specific topic that is specific to our district, not another school district, and then they'll actually present those back to Cabinet on the last meeting date. And then they're also going to produce professional learning opportunities for our staff members across the district in a building that's not their own, so basically providing PD opportunities. If you go down this document, I've kind of just outlined the main things, but the criteria for participation for current employees is they have to be working in a DESI-Maintained Certificated Position. This would commonly include a teacher, a counselor, or a library media specialist. The reason for that is they have to be able to transition that certificate to an Admin Cert, to be fully certified. They must have a minimum of three years of teaching experience before applying. That can be transferred into the district, not specific to our district. And then they have to either have obtained or will be pursuing an active Missouri Principal Certification that can cover the area they want to go into. The application window is going to open July 31st, later this month. We're about one week out, I believe, and then we'll keep it open for a month. There's going to be a district and building-level committee that will work together, that will filter through the applicants. We're expecting to cap that at five program participants this first year, so that'll be our cohort. At max, it would be five. And then, another huge benefit of this program is it's going to enhance tuition reimbursement for the program participants. So currently, because the Board has allowed, our policies let them receive tuition reimbursement for one course over a five-year period at CMO's tuition rate for graduate hours. By participating in this program, we're going to allow them to reimburse tuition for up to three classes over a five-year period, so that's about nine credit hours on average of a graduate program. So substantial difference, that could fall anywhere between $3,000 to $4,500 you're looking at, which will be a great upside. The specific topics that we're going to cover through the cohort are listed at the very last page, and then this will actually involve all of our Cabinet Team members here, helping provide that professional development for those cohort members along the way. So, we're really excited. We hope it's a well, a good application period to start, I guess, was what we'd say. We hope the interest is there from our staff. We feel like it will be. We just got to do a good job of communicating the information out, so. Are there any questions or comments about the Aspiring Leadership Academy?
Do you have any projections on, like, how many people you'd like to have involved in this?
I think ultimately, you know, starting with five is what me and Dr. Benyon felt like was a good number, especially since we're tripling the tuition reimbursement for those individuals, that first program cohort. We would like to see as many as up to 15 possibly in the future, is what we've mentioned. I think that's a fortunate way, depending on the availability of the admin jobs across the district. Obviously, if there's, you know, projected openings due to retirement announcements and things like that, that could change, but we hope it's at least working up towards that 10 to 15 number for the future.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, next up is the Treasurer Finance Report.
This report is for June 30th. So at our last board meeting, what I gave was preliminary. This was more final numbers. So at our June board meeting, I had that we were going to be ending at a 31.89% fund balance, and right now, this report is ending at a 32.18, so it's a little bit more in dollar amounts. It's approximately $200,000 that were to the, from the preliminary report. So for the general fund, we started with the beginning fund balance of $21.1 million. Revenues received for the month were 2.4, expenses were 2.5, and 2.6 million was transferred. We did a transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, which is an allowable transfer that is set by DESI, and we did the maximum transfer that they would allow, leaving us with the ending fund balance of $18.43 million for the month. And the cash and investment details are listed. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Support Services Report.
Good evening. First off, starting with facilities, just letting you know some things that are going around, going on around the district. Our new scoreboards that you agreed to purchase, those are going to be delivered actually tomorrow, so those will be going up soon, and it's going to be affecting a lot of our outdoor sports and all of our indoor sports at the high school, and then we're actually reutilizing some of those scoreboards over at the middle school to help facilitate some of the youth programming that we do at the middle school, so we'll have nice scoreboards over in that building. Our indoor facility, the steel is going up. Last week, that started. If you haven't taken a tour out of the high school, don't go in the work zone, look at it from outside the fence, please. But the steel is being erected, and probably have about another week and a half or so for that to be erected. We will have Phase 2 coming to you here soon. It's not out to bid. We're hoping to finalize all of that in the next couple of weeks, and then, but the numbers are looking really, really good on that. Red Star is continuing along. We're finalizing everything that we're looking at capturing in-house and then looking at those projects that we'll be pushing outside of the district that are just a little bit bigger than what our capabilities are. And on top of that, a lot, a lot of various projects throughout the districts, you know, replacing light receptacles and outlets and touch-up paint. You know, one of the things that we do is we have the opportunity for some of our staff, if they're interested in doing touch-up paint throughout the district. We employ our teachers over the summer for, for some extra money, and they're going through and painting our buildings and getting everything looking nice. You also see some other projects on the outsides of the buildings that are taking place. If you take a look at Clifford Elementary, we finally have our protective bollards up for that playground. Ms. Emmen Durfer has already made the comment for Halloween. She'd like to put big googly eyes on every yellow bollard to look like a group of minions are welcoming the kids in. I don't want to, I guess I kind of spilled the beans on that one, but I'll be looking for that in October. Nutrition services, things are going great. Dana has, McCard has been getting everything geared up and ready. You'll see a motion in front of you here a little bit later on some updating on some kitchen services. We've been very fortunate where we've qualified for some grants through DESI and through the USDA to upgrade some of our equipment. We're looking at pushing that out several of our buildings. From a school safety perspective, we've had a really busy summer. We've had our SROs, the Annual SRO. attend the annual SRO conference, a wealth of knowledge on updating new trends, currents, and laws and statutes that are important for our SROs to know. We have a few more trainings going on and we're also gearing up for trainings that'll be kicking out to all of our staff, you know, to help keep our staffs and students safe when school gets back in. So a lot of things going on and we're excited to get closer and closer to the start of the school year. Any questions?
Okay, next up we have board reports. We have MSBA delegate and legislative report.
So nothing for the delegate report. Legislative report, even though we're not currently in legislative session, that session's over. Last week, the governor signed into law 31 different bills that were passed this past year. The one that I'm most curious about, and we've talked about this one before, was Senate Bill 190. That's the tax relief for Missouri's senior citizens. That's the one that includes, it's kind of two parts. One is they're not going to tax social security benefits anymore. But then another portion of it that was kind of tucked in was the suspending of property tax. Once an individual turns age 65 or older, going forward, they're going to spend property tax. So it'll be stuck at that level. As you all know, that's where we get a majority of our income to run our schools is through real estate property tax. So we don't know what kind of impact that's going to have on us. I'm not sure the county even knows what kind of impact this is going to have because I believe if I understand it correctly, the county has to pass the procedure on how to track that. And that's going to be a huge undertaking because they will have to go through every record out there and determine if the person's age 65 or older because they don't report date of birth on any of those records. So it's going to be a huge undertaking for the county. And I can only imagine the headache that it's going to be for them to determine what the impact's going to be for us. And there's no way of projecting. I mean, we've, we've asked county assessor, what kind of impact can we expect to see? And they, they have no idea. So that's yet to be determined. But that's what they've done. We'll wait to see. But that's the only thing that really was any huge consequence to our district at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the Cape Public School Foundation Board Report. Ms. McDonald.
Hello. I just wanted to update just a few things real quick. The foundation is currently under the CFO Community Foundation, the Ozarks Matching Grant Challenge. And I wanted to let you know that we are currently, already have raised over $8,000. I am anticipating another $3,000 in the next couple of weeks, or in the next week, because I've had a few individuals that have contacted me about their minimum IRA distribution. So I'm excited about that. I have reached out to a couple of other people, and so I am fully expecting to reach that $15,000 that will go into the endowment. And then Community Foundation, the Ozarks, will by September put $10,000 into our fund. So our endowment fund is growing by $25,000. And so, super excited about that. Then I also wanted to just mention that the Cape Girardeau Public School Foundation is currently purchasing school supplies for our students. Ms. Carolyn Thomas and I have been going to Walmart and getting school supplies purchased. And they will be at the junior high and will have the back-to-school kickoff for our students that need school supplies. And then we are currently in the process of purchasing playground equipment and fencing for Jefferson Elementary. And I believe that is going to be installed before school starts as well, I hope. So anyway, that's where we're at. And we are currently still working and raising money. So everything's going good. Penguin Party is February 10th. Dr. Chavegas is our band, and it is going to be a great night. So mark that date on your calendar to save that. And just, I'm here if anybody needs anything. Thank you.
Scavenger Hunt?
I'm sorry?
The Scavenger Hunt?
Scavenger Hunt is August 25th. I am still working on details on that. I've been a little sidetracked with my, my grant. But we are working on that downtown with downtown businesses. So that is going to be Saturday, August 25th.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we got that in because that was going to be before our next board meeting.
Yes, August 25th. I will be emailing details. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, up next we have approval of consent agenda items. And this includes meeting, minutes of previous meetings from June 26th, payment of bills, Jamie Russell as coordinator of the assessment testing program, Brian Payne as Title IX Coordinator, Mandy Keys as Section 504 and ADA Coordinator. This is where she has many hats. Mandy Keys as liaison for homeless children and youth. Mandy Keys as liaison for migrant, ELL, immigrant and refugee children and youth. Mandy Keys as educational liaison for children in foster care. Chris Jock as the district's AHERA designated person, the professional development plan for 2023, 2024 academic year, and the testing plan for the 2023, 2024 academic year. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Other than the high school with Galileo, which we've talked about multiple times, and the RSPs being new this year, which I mentioned earlier, there's not any other changes that I can think of from that plan.
Just the dates.
Yeah, the dates realigned.
All right. All in favor in approving the consent agenda items?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to business items. First up is the adoption of the updated board policies. There's a lot of them. AC, BDDL. I didn't say what these are. AC is prohibition against illegal discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. BDDL is release of information. EGAA is reproduction of copyrighted materials. GDBDA is support staff leaves. IGBCA is program for homeless students. IGBE is students in foster care. IGCD is virtual courses. And IL1 is the assessment program. So can I get a motion to adopt these board policies as recommended by the administration?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Not any discussion on individual items. I just wanted, during our community engagement forums, there were some questions by some participants that were, they would watch something online and we would go through policies like we're doing now, where we've had a first reading, a second reading, and then an adoption. But they were really curious about what kind of process we go through in order to vet these policies. And then, so I just wanted to make everyone aware that, so there's a policy review committee that meets regularly. And we review the policies as they come down from MSBA, whether they're new policies or updated policies based on state statutes or changes within laws. So the committee's made up of two board members, administrators, teachers, parents, and a couple of principals. So I mean, it's, it's vetted through all of the different areas that it impacts throughout the school district. So I just wanted to make people aware that these aren't just random things that we come up with to put into place for a policy, that they are vetted. And then if changes are made, those go back through the attorney's process. They review the changes to make sure that they're within the statute limitations. And then they're sent down to the board to review and then to adopt if, if they choose. So I just wanted to make that.
I don't know if Bryce wants to explain this one here, but we've changed the leave policy.
Do you want to explain the changes in leave policy?
Yeah. So GDBDA, support staff leave addresses a new leave category that would be issued in addition to our standard policy. It would be titled school closing days. In the event that superintendent of schools, Dr. Benyon elects that there's conditions that would lead to the closing of school, this now allows our non-12-month classified support staff employees the ability to use up to five school closing days to cover those. A lot of times what happens is on an annual basis, we have inclement weather days. We had a bull water alert in the city for this previous school year. And what, when we're annualizing our payroll within the district, those staff members get caught in a situation where they have to inadvertently make up time after the fact. But we can't create more school days. We often close, but we can't just keep adding, right, at this point. So this helps counteract that problem moving forward by allowing them a separate leave category that can be used in the case of school closing. Any other questions about the leave designation?
Do you guys have any other questions about any of those? Okay. I think we need to take a vote, right?
Aye.
All right. All those in favor of adopting the board policies. Do I need to list them all again?
No.
Okay. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is the reimbursement rate for unused leave days upon retirement. So the motion to be considered is to approve a sliding scale daily reimbursement rate for accumulated sick leave days remaining upon retirement based on the amount of notice given.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Anybody want to talk about this one?
Yeah, so.
Doing the research on this.
So this motion and consideration for the red option obviously would provide us with much longer periods of notice when our employees are intending to retire. It's a sliding scale beginning with six-month notice that deducts $5 per month, leading towards the April board meeting that would be the standard issuance of contracts, technically for teachers by law. That's usually, or that's always required by April 15. So we're hoping that increasing the sliding scale to double the rate will essentially get us earlier notice so we can try to get the best applicant pool as early as possible to replace our certified and our classified staff members when we need to.
Have you spoke with any other school districts that utilize this plan?
I actually did. Actually, I didn't create this. I stole it from other school districts. So Poplar Bluff was recently discussing implementing this. I can't verify that they did or not. I went back and double-checked. That's where the conversation started with another Mo Asquith member and myself. But I know many schools, you know, they're either giving retirement incentives for early notice. I think Jackson Public Schools recently this past year, they set a hard deadline with Dr. Smith, and he stated that you would be paid $100 a day if you gave them your, you know, intent to retire at that point. So it's becoming common practice to try to incentivize early notice, especially for our certified teaching staff members. Just because of the shortage out there, it's getting so competitive that you want to start interviewing the field as soon as possible. Any other questions about the sliding scale for reimbursement?
Do we have any idea of what kind of estimated cost impact this would have?
Yeah. So let me pull the numbers from the previous years. Obviously, if we reimburse it $25 a day on our max, the maximum reimbursement moving forward with the current policy would be $3,500 per employee. This could potentially double that to be $7,000 per employee. Our tuition reimbursement five-year average is around $35,000 per year for certified staff currently. And it's just over $12,400 for unused classified staff. So those numbers could potentially double, which was calculated by our CFO when she reviewed the scale as well. The other part that highly affects that is obviously both of these policies clearly stipulate it's not just leaving the district. You're not reimbursed. You have to be 10 years of uninterrupted service within the district, and it has to be upon retirement, not resignation. So that also controls the overall expenses we would be paying out. Simply people just resigning from the district would not be paid on the scale. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just think it's important because you have your, it's not called block anymore. It was when I was a teacher. But you have your block teachers or your college students that are already in the classrooms that we're getting a really good interview at, watching them be in the classroom. And it's sad to think that you lose those opportunities because they're constantly looking for a job. Like you said, it's a small pool of teachers out there right now. So being able to get some of these notifications in even sooner about retirement allows us to kind of go after, especially those that are already inside our buildings even faster. So I think it's, I think it's pretty important.
And just to add to that, that's one very important piece about the sliding scale going as far back as November and December. Because in terms of student teaching placements, that also catches first semester placements and not just second semester placements. So typically, that could increase your applicant pool by anywhere from, you know, 10 to 20 teachers per semester you could possibly be interviewing.
I don't think that you mentioned this as well. It also helps with teacher retention as well, especially when those teachers that are getting ready to retire are at that point where they can, if they go another year or two, they'll stay as well. So that has a lot to do with teacher retention as well, kind of go along with what you're saying.
All right, let's call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the sliding scale daily reimbursement rate for accumulated sick leave days remaining upon retirement based on the amount of notice given. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is a motion to be considered is to approve the reimbursement rate for unused sick leave days in excess of the maximum accumulation at $25 per unused sick leave day.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so the reimbursement rate for unused in excess of 140, this was the previous rate that also matched the reimbursement rate for unused leave days upon retirement. We're simply separating the two by doing this process that we're discussing right now. So the sliding scale would be implemented for retirement notification following those parameters we've already discussed. These are for those current employees that have maxed out the number of days you can accumulate per policy, which is 140. So this takes effect immediate while they're working. It's being paid out through our payroll department. So they're being compensated for not being able to keep accumulating days above 140.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the reimbursement rate for unused sick leave days in excess of the maximum accumulation of $25 per unused sick leave day?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, last item under business is the motion to be considered is to authorize the superintendent or his designee to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board with Roth Restaurant Supply for a double stack oven for an amount not to exceed $52,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is obviously for our nutrition services, and we're looking at installing these in the, there you go. This is for our, I'll start over, nutrition service department. These will be installed at the junior high. Those ovens, our maintenance department has lovingly tried to extend their life cycle multiple years beyond what they've been designed for. And we're at the point where we're needing to replace their double stack ovens. We have installed these combi ovens in other buildings already. And so they're not just ovens, they're steamers. We can even buy apparatuses if we wanted to, where we could smoke ribs and Boston butts in them. Unfortunately, that's not part of the nutrition service program guidelines. Unfortunately, that's not part of the nutrition service program guidelines. I have been in touch with lobbyists, and we're trying to get that changed, but we're just not there yet. But these are really great machines and can cook a variety of different ways. And so, out of multiple bids received, it is a recommendation to go with Roth. And as you can further see down on the rationale, we also are receiving $23,500 from DESI to cover half the cost of this. So, any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of authorizing the superintendent or his designated to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board with Roth Restaurant Supply for the double-stack oven for an amount not to exceed $52,000.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We thought Krispies couldn't get better.
That's right. Crispyer Krispies.
Okay, do we have any information and proposals from board members?
Welcome, Dr. Benyon. You made it through your first meeting.
Thank you. And you did make me cry. I can't believe that. It's not a adjourned yet. Thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, no attempts to make him cry. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?